Please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Gina Marosi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Hope everybody had a good Veterans Day yesterday. That's why we are meeting on Tuesday tonight. Let us go to, I should say that this is the first regular board meeting for the Villas-Poste Board Trustees on November 12, 2024, for the month of November. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the October 28, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I have a comment on the minutes. I just think something needs to be clarified. We have a statement in the minute saying Mr. Ikaluchi, 3 Onward Drive, asked about the posting of attachments to minutes. What he said was, it's probably as maybe I could not find the statements of trustee Raymond, trustee Baskin's statement. And the answer provided was that the statements would be in attachments posted in the minutes online. And the minutes, I believe, in my opinion, would be more accurate and be of more value to the public if they would provide the explicit problem presented, that the statements cannot be found, and the solution to that problem stated at the meeting. And this is not just for statements from trustees, but for anyone submitted statements. For example, the minutes state that Annie Jurzak shared her concerns about a VRVO in her neighborhood, and then says parentheses, attached. So that sentence doesn't really do just, you know, justice to her lengthy statement. But that would be okay if the minutes clearly indicated to the public there's an actual statement that was submitted, and that it is actually attached to the minutes for public review. Putting the word attached in parentheses and then having nothing actually attached to the minutes is unclear and just causes confusion. So the relevant motion on this issue that passed on 5/9/22 reads in part, "All written statements read at a board meeting and submitted to the clerk within 10 days of the board meeting will be attached to the minutes as part of the official record of the meetings." If the motion is written, it's not going to be filed to the letter and these statements attached to the minutes. At least, we should identify clearly in the minutes that a statement was submitted and where the statement can be found online. The most straightforward solution would be just to attach it to the minutes that everyone sees when the minutes are sent out, as stated in the motion. I think this is what the public expects, and it would be much more user-friendly and transparent. I would also, so that's my comment on that and the management of statements. I also couldn't miss the fact that the end of the meeting, when the mayor made a motion to adjourn, I indicated that I thought he was violating the rules of procedure by interrupting me, and I feel like that should also be addressed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll say no.
Yeah, three one approved. No presentations tonight. Might have one coming up on our next meeting. There is validating whether that is true or not. It's time for public comment on agenda items only, two minutes per speaker. If you're on Zoom, this will be a time to raise your hand to discuss agenda items only, so we'll want to do that right now. Anybody in the audience lives? Just for that real to realize where.
Liz Cormos, 89, hi. I've commented on two of the motions. On E, I see that you're applying for a CRTC Unified Planning Work Plan for the reduction in speed limit, which is worth looking at here in the village. But that's rather a small study, and I think, you know, you could expand that to include some real evaluation, including, you know, doing traffic measurements on key streets and determining the right methodologies for controlling the traffic and improving safety and calming traffic, because the speed limit will hopefully do some of that, but it may not accomplish everything they're looking for. And then the other motion, F, on the ability to stream planning and zoning meetings, I think that's an excellent idea. I mean, you know, the more transparent the village can be. I noticed that you have a note here and indicated the village website cannot be used to host audio files, probably because they take up too much room. And if you did stream them, then they'd be up on YouTube. People are used to looking there for, you know, streaming meetings. They'd be occurring as a meeting is happening. They could take comments. You know, not everybody who might be interested in planning and zoning topics can make the in-person meeting. And it would also allow, if you had a visual, that when we have site plans, you could put it up on the screen, and everybody could see what the site plan is. So I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else? Marilyn?
Marilyn Stevenson, 45, West High Street. I also want to comment on motion 7F. I think it's a great idea. The topic of the ability of both boards to actually utilize a platform like Zoom came up more than a year ago at the zoning advisory committee meeting. And prior to that, it came up during conservation, excuse me, the comprehensive planning steering committee meeting, where we talked about basically communication at the village level, transparency of government operations, et cetera. So I am very supportive of that. I wanted to briefly just mention, as part of the meeting minutes, I saw the Capital Region Transportation Council package, the request for proposals. Did not know what it was connected with, but I should just mention that at last week's zoning advisory committee meeting, it was brought to the group's attention that our flood maps are quite dated in the village of Boston Spa. We had been talking about flood maps.
FEMA has already updated them actually and is in the process of proving new ones. I actually, I sent to Matt, I heard that the discussion had occurred, and they're not approved yet, but there are changes such as 78 Thompson Street will be taken out of the flood plan in that new map. So it's in FEMA's hands currently.
Yeah, right. So on the website, it doesn't give an actual date when that information is released. But I'm just suggesting that this request for proposals has an opportunity here while we're waiting, waiting, waiting for an update to the 1995 maps, that there is an opportunity to request a flood vulnerability assessment. And just for the trustees' information, Zach noted that, you know, there has not been a lot of attention of flood maps and planning. And while you're going through the revitalized Boston Spa opportunity, it's important to make sure that people's and business investment and village infrastructure is protected. And the way you do that is by implementing a community rating system so that people don't pay exorbitant premiums for flood insurance, which was a big topic of discussion at the meeting. So I'm just suggesting, based on the minutes of the Zach meeting, that it's important to update the flood maps as soon as possible concurrently with the zoning as we make changes and to make sure the trustees, you know, understand that that's a priority for any new investment. Thank you.
And just to be clear, there's a FEMA flood map. These are FEMA flood maps. They are being changed and updated. This was put in the hands of Lobella, and that's who informed us of the change in first place as we engaged with them to work on seeing, A, the 78 Thompson Street situation, and B, the entire area, working with another professional that tried to assist with 199 Milton Ave in the past, to see that apparently there may have been double counting going on with two bodies of water, being double counted in a way that shouldn't have been done. It looks like some of FEMA's work has taken that into better consideration. And for instance, as I said, 78 Thompson Street will no longer be in the flood plan, which we just debate the USDA with respect to the loan that we're going to be pursuing related to 78 Thompson Street in the next month or two. So it is in Lobella's hands, along with FEMA's hands right now, just to be clear on that. Okay, anybody else? Yes, Mike?
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Ikaluchi, 3 Onward Drive. I also want to just make a comment about 7E. I think, like Liz, I was, this is the first that I've seen of the CRTC program. And it looks like it could be quite expansive, and I don't know how much time was available to the board or the mayor to look at possible ways to try to tap into that program. So timing-wise, I don't know if it was short or longer, but it seemed like there were opportunities for much faster projects. Second question about that, I might be complaining different parts of what was attached. It appears that the contract with Lobella provides for 90 days for Lobella to complete the work. I thought I saw that proposals have to be submitted by December 6. So if I've got the dates right, I was just confused.
The proposal, just to, just to, because I got this question earlier, so it's not a bad question at all, Mike. The proposal is for them to undertake the work once approval would occur from the CRTC. They'll help us write the grant application in the first place. It's due in early December, as you're pointing out. And then if it is accepted and we receive the money, they would undertake the $12,300, I think, worth of work, which we have a small match on. If they don't, or if we don't get the money, then it would be up to the board to decide if we take it to the next step. So we're not signing the proposal. We're just including it as what it would cost to give proof to the CRTC on why we're seeking the grant money.
So I wasn't sure I understood how the $12,300 contract with Lobella would work with any grant that's awarded. So if no grant is awarded, the vote is paying $12,300.
No, the village would have to then vote to expend the $12,300. This is only being included as a proposal so that CRTC has hard past evidence that we are intending to spend $12,300 on a study for this.
So Lobella is not going to actually, forgive me.
Not currently.
Lobella is not going to start doing work until afterwards.
You got it. Yep.
And then a comment just about 7F. I think, I think everybody in the community and associated with the board recognizes and appreciates the idea of easier access for the public to meetings. I don't understand all the differences between the different means of getting that done. I certainly hope that you, as a board, can come to some sort of resolution to, as quickly as possible, make it more accessible to the public and recognize that those employees are already running very hard, if not more than 100%. Don't know that that can be done anytime real soon, but as a goal, to get that done and within a reasonable period of time, I hope it's something you all can do. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Seen none, seen nothing on Zoom. Let us move along. There is no consent agenda. As we do, we have one item. We moved into the base here so that it'll be quicker. Got a motion that Catherine Howard be appointed as a member of the Union Fire Company Number Two and added to the roles of Boston Spa Fire Department. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got to get a motion authorizing the mayor to execute any necessary paperwork related to a T-Mobile grant application for Wiswauw Park renovations for up to $50,000.
I'll make the motion.
I'll give it to trustee Baskin. I'll give trustee Fundanza the second on it. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got to get a motion authorizing the use of $1,000 previously allocated for Wiswauw Park mulch for mulch to be used for other locations throughout the village per the recommendation of the Park and Tree Board.
Oh my gosh.
It's on a good trustee Fundanza, out of fairness. Who wants a second, trustee Baskin? Sure. You got it. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got to get a motion. Let me add, there is an additional grant you want to include before I make this motion.
So just what's not included in the attachments, the BSPPA's concerts in the park is also going to be applying for the same amount that they did apply for last year, which was $5,000. It helps them get kind of a better variety of artists there, so we'd like to support them in that effort, too.
Got to get a motion approving the attached Sheraton Arts Grant Application Summary plus the concerts in the park proposal for $5,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute paperwork related to the applications after any necessary village attorney review. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got a motion approving the merit to execute a grant application related to the CRTC Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, for funding to study the potential drop of the village's speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour, improving the use of the attached Lobella Associates proposal for $12,300 for such study inside the application. Such amount includes a 10% match by the village if accepted by the CRTC as required. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Baskin, the second in that one. Discussion.
So the idea introduced just by Liz Cormos just now, does it make sense to look at a range of traffic calming possibilities? Or is it, it would be impossible to change the motion and whoever else? You know, the 20, lowering to 25 miles per hour, but also other kinds of techniques and strategies. Does it make sense to look at?
There's only $250,000 in this program or minimum of, so we'll assume that's 250. So asking for $12,300 or whatever, the short of the match is still over, I think, $10,000. I think we are pretty much maxing out. They tried to give a number of these different communities throughout the state. So I don't feel comfortable trying to go over and above that. There are other programs probably we could seek out that would be for larger amounts of money, et cetera, in that, or possibly go to the federal government directly through the congressional town hall. So I would suggest, in this situation, I think we've got a good amount of money where it's not over asking. It'll probably get approved, I would hope, with the right application. Everybody else can help us with that.
Okay.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And I got a motion to require the village of Boston Spa administration, obtained within 45 days, the ability to livestream and report for later viewing, meaning to the Boston Spa Planning Board and Zoning Board Appeals, and implement livestreaming and reporting for all their meetings within 60 days.
Make the motion.
Trustee Baskin.
There's no second. I'll table it. Sean will be back.
Well, I, let's, let's discuss, if we can, just briefly, your spitballing. The footnote suggests giving you the lead on it. I mean, why don't you come with a proposal on how you would do it and cost and who and stuff like that? And in the meantime, Jen's working on getting the audio recording stuff because, yeah, she is working on it, as I said. So why don't you come back tabling it, but getting better information that will show us what it will cost, how to do it, and all that stuff? Because remember, we are going to have those meetings except when there is a large situation before the Planning, where Zoning Board in Villachall will figure out where to put them on a case-by-case basis if we are aware of a larger application situation that's in front of them. So if you want to take the next couple of weeks to figure that out, send us some information. I think it'd probably be the best way to get it done. Eric?
Yeah, I guess I would, I don't mind being part of the planning process. I guess I would like to hear a commitment from the board trustees to the goal of doing this, and then we figure out how. I definitely don't intend for existing staff to, to spend more of their nights at these meetings. I believe that this could be a feasible goal with the chairs of the Planning Board, Zoning Board, organizing members and identifying members who would be willing to assist with this and implement the streaming. And I know there are people on the boards that agree with this goal and would be willing to assist. And we may need things like, you know, another different village Zoom account, or someone's laptop, a microphone, a camera. You know, the model, one of our models is the zoning advisory committee, which is run by volunteers. And I know I've been down on Matt Erblin for not allowing the public to see documents, but I have to give him credit for ensuring that the meetings have been, have all been streamed. And that's extremely helpful and important, and I appreciate that he and other volunteers, Jared Ikaluchi and others, make sure to get that done. So it is, it is doable. And if this, so if the message went out to the Planning, where Zoning Board, yes, this is a village goal, I'd be more than happy to, to work as part of a planning committee or group to figure out the best way to implement. Is this something, is this a goal that we would all share and agree to? That doesn't make these specific, you know, timeframes, you know, those are random.
I think I'm supportive of having video at some point. I'd like to see what our setup is as far as going into the future. Will we have, you know, in this new space, once it's finished, what? So a couple of things. Setting this up and taking this down is a lot, first off. Jen and Frank, I sometimes help. We don't currently have a situation where we leave things up and it's secured and safe as far as like equipment. So those are kind of some thoughts. I don't necessarily want to rely on volunteers to have to do that. I'd rather have our, you know, our board members in the ZVA and Planning focused on the task. And if I had to do that in Milton, I would not be thrilled, because they want to be able to engage with the applicant and ask questions. And again, I think open, I think folks would like that. We're not there yet. I think as a village, as far as our facilities and equipment, certainly can work toward that. I don't know when that would be, exactly what time that would be. But yeah, I don't think anybody's against it. It's just putting more, more work on staff, more, you know, it's the logistics of it, you know?
If there is an agreement that that, that this is a goal that we all share, a destination we'd like to achieve, I bet we could figure out a way to make this feasible. I mean, there already is a staff person going to all these meetings as an addition to all the volunteers. And again, the ZAC is a good model, potentially. Again, I wouldn't ask the same staff person who goes to ZAC to go to all these other meetings as well. So, but if we, again, it wouldn't have to be as big a setup, as many mics. The ZAC is a good model of how this is done in a manageable way. And talk to people there. They think it works very well. I know people in the public appreciate it. But yeah, but if, if we are interested in this goal, and it doesn't have to be in this meeting room either, it could be wherever, then I would, I could send some emails out to the chairs and potentially other Planning Board, Zoning Board, well, I guess the whole Planning Board, Zoning Board members, and see who wants to show up to a meeting to think about how to do this. And we could come up with a plan. And once we have a plan, then I guess we bring it back to this group and we'd work to implement it. There's certainly, where there's a will, there's a way, like this is, you know, these kinds of streaming meetings are done all the time, everywhere. And so it's not, you know, no longer cutting of science or anything. So it is doable. The logistics are manageable if we have the will to do it. So if I have a commitment from this group that, yes, we want to move forward in that direction, I would be very happy to work on the planning and that.
Again, just my own caveat is, you know, I look to Tom Milton when we do our meetings. We have dedicated staff for that board, and I just don't know what the capabilities is Catherine, right?
Yeah.
She's got stuff she needs to be taking care of during those meetings. So just, I guess, be very thoughtful about, like, the feasibility of other, you know, who's going to be doing it. Again, I'm not really comfortable with it being board members. It should be some, I don't know what the answer is. I don't have one yet. But that doesn't make me comfortable, I'm going to be honest, because really they should be focusing on the task for them. So, but yeah, yes, I think we could maybe figure that out. I could even talk to Tom Milton, what, what they currently do. They have a much more sophisticated setup. But, you know, we, we have discussed that for wherever we land, for our board meetings, to have something more permanent or easier for, you know, our staff to do as well. So I think if we talk about that, we should probably maybe think also for the future for this board, wherever. I don't know what we're going to do for meeting spaces, but anyway, that's my thought.
There is no meat the table because it was not, never seconded, it just, I'm thinking out loud here what we did. So for now, it fails as a motion, but it can be brought back, obviously, with the additional work.
Well, again, I mean, I guess that speaks to whether there's an interest in doing this. We could pass a motion that, say, modifies the timeframe or something, but just indicates to the Planning and Zoning Board that this is an intention and.
I'm hearing disagreements by luck on that.
I don't want to attach any times or any, like, I want to move forward to this. But again, we don't know where everybody's going to make that shift.
Trouble, consensus is what Carlos is recommending. Again, I think it's going to be very tough in the other location. We're already trying to figure out the best ways to even manage. I'm not thrilled with even how we do our special meetings in the Villachall, so we're going to have to work on that a little bit better over the next couple of months to get those right. And so maybe when we have a permanent space or more permanent space for everybody again, we can put things in place that we, it was tried with that. That was not exactly the best option up there, that Nipo camera, I think it is up there. So, but there are other possibilities of other options. That camera that we're using currently is pretty good. It looks like for, you know, when we have especially only five people in the floor, I think our picture's pretty good there type of situation. But again, we have to take it down, put it up, take it down, put it up every time.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, I don't see it. Again, the ZAC is, is the model, not necessarily this setup. And they seem to be able to focus on their meetings with the streaming, and I think community members appreciate that. But yeah, I'm just worried about the timing. So we're talking, what, two, three, four years for this library to be renovated and set up?
We're talking months for this room to be accessible again, I believe.
Just months?
Yeah. The idea was to, it was, correct if I'm wrong on this, it's.
I guess.
Spring, I thought.
Yes, when they start construction.
You know, it started down a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I don't know what the timeline is.
I thought this whole room is going to be renovated.
It is, but it's.
But in a few months?
That the first part of this, I believe, was the downstairs and the addition, basically, being worked on. That's why we're clearing out.
Right, right. So I thought it would be like well over a year.
You know, maybe not spring, but sometime in 2024.
That's great.
It's not as bad as you were thinking, though.
I believe the electronics is part of that plan to have.
Considering something, I just haven't seen what it is and see what the accessibility is for us to manage it. So we'll see where that goes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's hopeful that it's not that long from now. That's great.
Okay.
So I think, I think there's a consensus of general support, but again, we need to see a plan, what we're spending, if anything, who's doing it, et cetera. So you want to start that groundwork?
Well, it sounds like we're waiting for the more formal setup. Like, I don't want to waste time on something else that we're doing if we're committed to this space.
I mean, if you want to start kind of fishing to see if they want to try to do something in the meantime, you are welcome to, and then bring it back. It's, I think, either way, I mean, however you want to handle it. So.
All right.
Got to get a motion approving the attached agreement between Boston Area Seniors and the Village of Boston Spa for $12,000 related to the period from June 1, 2024 to May 31, 2025. Trustee Price Bush, trustee Fundanza, on the second discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, can I just clarify? So this is coming up now because their, their calendar, this was approved way back.
Well, no, it was budgeted. We approved it by email. We're just officially approving it here in the meeting. But what happened, another byproduct of changing the official year, is that it used to be in line with essentially budget time so that those things during the organizational meeting were approved as agreements. Now, our budget runs June 1 through May 31. Our official year runs January 1 through December 31, or thereabouts. And as a result of it, we can't approve agreements on January 1 to June 1 because we haven't gone to budget yet at that point. So we still have to approve each of these, you know, at some time, point in time. We've got to get a little cleaner about how we're doing it. It's just another of those things that slips through the cracks on this change. And we, we wake up one day and somebody's like, where's my money? We're like, oh, we have to do an agreement related to that money.
But the others, the others on products we give to, they've been taken care of, I believe, last May, right? We had agreements with them and then.
I don't think it was in May this year. We'd have to look back.
Yeah, it might have waited till like.
We pushed this one only because they were kind of knocking on our doors, saying, hey, where's their money?
Do we have others that are?
I would believe so. So we've got to collectively the list of them. I would believe so. So we've got to pick collectively uh the list of them again, but I could want to push this one to the front because obviously they need the money from us. So. Okay, um I'm gonna play the role of uh Sean Raymond here, who uh could not be with us due to work uh situation tonight. Uh and read the list in Marissa report here of the DPW uh stuff they're doing. Uh paving's been completed for the season and fiscal year, approximately $36,000 chips money and $115,000 village money. Uh Jeff also reports some more speed indicator signboards have been put up, as you probably know by now, he says. Uh, we uh, I'm not gonna say this one because you wanted to talk about this one in a second. Uh, things they're working on, uh and I, let me underscore this because I got calls and notes during the weekend on this one. Y'all, as they say, love your leaves or felt like your leaves out there out front. Leaf pickup via leaf vacuum. It's a third done uh in terms of the uh first rounder pass. Uh will continue for four more weeks. Uh they hope to complete the final pass a week after Thanksgiving. So if you still have leaves out there, it was the late thanks to paving going a little later than normal. They're on it, they're working on it. They've been working Saturdays, I believe, to actually get this completed, at least the first pass. So thanks to DPW for working hard to. Play catch up like that. Brush pickup is a separate operation yet to start, please. Uh do not commingle brush with leaves. It's dangerous to men and equipment and it slows them down. Uh they are forming and pouring concrete ADA sidewalks for CHIPS compliance in areas where uh we were doing paving. Uh taking down American flags, winterizing hydrants, a three quarters complete, that's 400 hydrants totaled by the way. Um, they are working on the lead letters uh that the EPA is requiring for anybody that has a lead uh component in their system. Uh for their water system and uh those are gonna be due out uh around November 15th, it looks like. Uh again, those are just by law, we have to let them know you may have a small piece of lead galvanized service in our case. That uh we're coming contact with water and it should be removed. Uh and you know, your, your options with respect to it ultimately. Uh continuing interviewing, uh continuing interviewing candidates for two DPW positions, laborary slash CDL drivers or those positions. Uh they're prepping equipment and plows for winter. Uh you know, when the wind started blowing today, it was a good reminder of it's down the street. Uh, let's see, they're also working on preparing a list for the board for the next meeting of excess old equipment, vehicles. Et cetera, to be sold on auctions international because we do have a little bit of stockpile of stuff that is taking up space that we can probably sell. And uh with respect to formal uh numbers for the board to approve. He's gonna put together for replacement of the pool filter for contractor to furnish and install will be $70,000 plus. The tank only with the DPW installing it is $25,000, which was a, in the vicinity of what we budgeted for. Uh it's three to four months to get the tank and then they probably would sell it in springtime when they get the tank. Uh if that is the, where we go. And a reminder, it is four more weeks before Jeff Partey's retire. He puts at the end of this email. Yeah, a- as mayor, I think I just changed that weeks to months, but there you go. But uh there is that. Uh also just pointing out that I gotta know about this, this weekend. The uh Airbnb and ADU survey delayed, uh over the next couple of days should be finished. I had a, what I recall, too many questions. I have written, so I'm just trying to scale it back and review it, make sure it's a quality that we'll get responses on. Because if the survey's too long, I think it ends up not getting the feedback you want. So we're working on getting that up.
Can we all see it? I, I might add some ideas for it.
I will happily push it to you, but I, I would ask you to be quick about the response because I am starting to get people like, where is it, where is it, where is it? So yes, but I, you know, let's look forward, make sure you give me a quickie response on that one, okay?
Uh, can I get it back to what, Thursday or Friday?
Well, I'd probably not get it to you. I, I, I want to edit it one more time before I send it out and then I will get it to you.
All right, great, thanks.
Yep, no problem. Uh, I think that is it because a couple of other people want to say some other things, I think, about library Christmas tree. So you go ahead.
You can help himself. Uh this will be part of my VSBA report. Um, uh, we found a tree. Thank you for Jen's work and the BSBA's work on finding a beautiful, beautiful Christmas tree. I do have a photo, but you probably won't be able to see it. We can uh all enjoy it on uh December 6th. That's when we're gonna do the holiday parade and also the tree lighting. Um we hope folks will come out for that. Uh also the BSBA is um preparing for a shocking league, uh Small Business Saturday. That's coming up very, very soon. Um I feel like this year is flying by, so. I should have thought about this. So if Thanksgiving is the 28th, uh Small Business Saturday is the 30th. Uh getting a, a jumpstart under shopping in the village is always really appreciated by our small business owners. These are people that have families. Um and you know, it, it helps their, their children have a nice holiday. So I encourage you to please shop at the local shops. Um as far as, oh, we had the Brentfield opportunity. Yeah, area. Uh, we have a steering committee, we're calling it Revitalize Boston Spa. Um just to kind of share what the heart of the program is for the village. We don't want people scared of this process. It's really to look at, you know, some of our most uh interesting sites, they'll say, like rickets and angelas. And utilizing folks from the community to share some of their thoughts and uh their personal experiences, some of their expertise. We have a really great team. Uh we met last Thursday. Um really lovely team, uh good energy. Uh, basically the first meeting, we spent time uh looking over what the original proposed map, the lines were for the boa area. And um you know, the steering committee members pointed out other areas that should be considered. Uh so from now until our next meeting, which will be January 9th, Thursday. Uh at seven o'clock and those will be, uh, we will not schedule meetings on the same night as that, just so uh folks are clear about that. Uh we'll be meeting again in person and that's uh phase two, which is planning, uh planning, visioning, planning, visioning. Um but great start so far and a lot of the folks are really excited to work on this and um really, I'm really excited, honestly.
It was a great meeting. Uh so thank you for uh, you know, helping put that together with Nora Bell. Uh I inadvertently took treasurer's report, so I'll become a liaison treasurer here at this point. Uh just a reminder, everybody, the village office is prepared. It sent the re levy for taxes and utilities. Uh utilities uh sent to the towns was 89,815, tax re levy to the county, then to towns. Uh is 76,143, to old village uh property tax re levies, 8,1,0473. Can expect to receive re levy monies uh by February 2025 and LGSS has provided us with our financial reconciliation for the month of October 2024. Been uh provided to uh the mayor and the village trustees. I should note that the AFR had an error in it that we caught in terms of characterization of 78 Thompson Street. And so that uh, that transaction, so uh they had to revise it. They asked us to take one more look at it, so we're finishing that up. And at the next meeting or by the next meeting, you shall have that in the possession, but we did want to make sure that that was being shown accurately ultimately. And it was something that was uh good to you with that. Um, Mary?
Okay. Um, task force is holding breakfast with Santa on Saturday, December 7th from 8:00 AM until 11:00 AM. And $5 per person will get you a pancake breakfast. Uh Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there. About the photos as well as crafts, music and other entertainment. Um, also the menorah lighting is going to be taking place on December 26th. It's the day after the first day of Hanukkah, but they understand the importance of Christmas, you know, with your family. So that will be in Wiswell Park. The Austin Area Seniors memberships are due for 2025. $15 for 55 plus $10 for anyone who turned 80 in 2024. And free to anyone who turns 90 in 2024. So it's a great program, lots of activities. And at our next board meeting, Francine Duca, the president, um agreed to meet and tell us more about. The activities that they host at the Austin Area Seniors and their field trips. Um, the Saratoga County Department of Aging and Youth will be holding a free seminar this Saturday at the Holiday Inn. At 2:32 Broadway from 9:00 AM until 3:30. It's titled A Guide to Caregiving. Which healthcare providers, um experts in other fields with caregiving. Will share their knowledge and experience to educate and support caregivers. You can call the Department of. Aging and Youth Services, um just to make sure that there's still spots available. Uh their phone number is 518-884-4100. And last but not least, most importantly, the groundbreaking for the library will take place this Sunday. From one, at 1:30, um there's gonna be light refreshments in here, the groundbreaking will take place outside. And construction, I believe, is to start Monday, the 18th. That's all I have.
Sounds good. Ben?
Thanks. Uh do we know where we're gonna meet after the groundbreaking starts? Are we still in here or?
No, uh we, we just said that uh we'll go to village hall for. Again, unless we, we cite the, you know, public area, it's gonna be of uh, you know, large crowd or something like that. It seems like. Judging crowd size last few times, that we could probably fit in there uh pretty easily for that purpose. And then um as we kind of learn about ourselves, if that needs to change, we'll make that change.
All right, that's. Um, the Committee on the Arts, the big uh event coming up is November 16th, Sounds and Winter Concert at Brookside Museum. It's a string wind concert, Celtic harp, uh duet. Sounds lovely. It's free and I encourage everyone to go. All the concerts, they're excellent. These are professional musicians. Um, they've also been busy managing the whole search of arts grant uh project. Uh and their next meeting is November 20th at the Real McCoy for now. Um or have they switched over to nine, to 199 Milton?
It sounds like they're not gonna do that till January 1st or about, so, yeah.
Yeah, all right, that's all of it.
Uh thanks to uh Rory for helping us out with that space issue for them. That's a good space, I think, the size of their committee ultimately. So thank you to him for that. He's doing it for no cost to the village.
And then. Uh the uh Park and Tree Board, the summary from the chair, uh the Park and Tree Board has been. Working to finish up some light tree maintenance to help ready a few younger trees for the winter ahead. They're also working towards some longer term items like potential grants to help with improvements in Wiswell Park. And they're thinking ahead to the spring and green store and beautification and maintenance around street trees and other vacant spaces throughout the village. The next meeting is seven, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 19th, at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Conference Room.
Uh, let's see, uh no old business, no new business listed. Public comment on any issue, three minutes. And again, if you're on Zoom, this will be the time to raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to comment on any issue for three minutes. Anybody in the room? Eve, how are you?
Eve, Kevin, 50 North Street. Just have a couple of things. Um, I wanted to say. A lady um came up to me knowing that I was part of the park, uh Parks and Trees. And asked about the content of the water when it was, the spring waters, I should say. She wants to know how much iron is in the iron springs because she's low on iron and she thought if she drank, and she's been drinking a cup of water. And I just wanted to know. So I stopped at the village office the other day on my walk and asked, and she checked. And she said that we haven't done a study on the water in five years and it might be a good idea that we kind of do a priority on that, I think. Because if we're drinking public water, we're offering to the public for free, it just might be something we want to know that it's not. Contaminated in some way. So that, that question, all right, that takes care of that. And then the other thing is, I'm very proud of the Village of Boston Spa. I love it and I, I love telling people about it. Although I feel like we have more than just the rickets that it's kind of a, an eyesore in Angelica. And I'm sorry, but just the weeds that grow around all our beautiful flowers. And I would like to propose that we think about hiring someone full time to manage our, the beautiful spots around our, our village. I know we have the adopt a plot, but it's planted, but very often that's the only time it's looked upon. So it, it bothers me whenever I walk around town to see all the weeds run around. And that would be a great way to revitalize Boston Spa, just make it look really pretty. A lot of people come to Saratoga. And they do head down here and they do like the antiques and I like the, the um, the restaurants. So if we could make it look prettier, I think it would be great. So I'm all in favor of hiring a partner.
Thank you.
Marilyn Stevenson, 45 West High Street. Uh I just want to give you an update on the most recent zoning advisory committee meeting. Uh last week, the committee recommended uh that we not include mobile homes and mobile home parks. As part of the zoning update, so we've um passed that on to our consultant. The committee did recommend modular homes as a potential, uh but we need a definition. Again, the consultant will help us with that. They also recommended condos would be appropriate in the village. We still have a word to talk about. And they want to understand definitions, regulations and the possible tap, tax assessment implications. If condos were to be allowed in the village. Uh we've talked about the flood maps, how FEMA is still updating that. Uh the committee did say they want the village trustees to prior, prioritize encouraging those maps to be done. And we did talk about flood insurance. I discovered today that the village is not a municipal member. For the National Flood Insurance Program and by doing certain things in our zoning code, doing planning activities. We could reduce premiums that would need to be paid to any uh property owners within the village. And there are about 270 properties that are impacted because they're in the flood zone. That could be an asset of, if the trustees would consider that. Next steps, the topic of RV and trailers was a discussion item at our meeting from a standpoint of enforcement. Light and property upkeep. We did have a discussion about our knowledge of existing situations. Where people are parking their RVs in front or alongside their house. Uh, okay. Uh our next meeting is next Thursday, November 21st. And that will be at 50 West High Street, which is the Cornell Cooperative Extension Auditorium. We meet at 7:00 PM. The public is welcome. The topics that we're going to cover are huge. Uh the first one will be signage. We will talk about home based businesses and where they are appropriate. And it was also brought up uh pools. There's a discussion interest in talking about pools. That's about it. Thank you.
I'm sort of curious about how uh they handle condos in, let's say, Florida. And it looks like each one gets their own uh tax map number per se from their, that county. So they, they must be assessed individually as condos, even though they're inside the same building, uh because it's an ownership block inside the building, so.
There's a specific way in New York State that they assess them. It's similar to that, it's not considered that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just curious to see how it works. Uh, okay, uh I think we're zoomers here, so.
Mark Wurden?
Mark?
Yeah, I just got two things concerning parking. Um, one is.
What's your address, Mark, before anything else?
24 Chesterwood Court.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, one thing, there's a, uh, there's a car that's been parked for the last few months. On Chester Street that's unregistered. Um, it, it's a little difficult getting around. It, uh, the street itself is only wide enough for two, one going each way. So having a car parked there kind of blocks the street from two ways traffic. Um, it is unregistered. There's a, an expired registration sticker on it and no license plates on the car on Chester Street.
Mark, do you know what address it's down yours to, just so that uh we can find?
It's uh, it's in front of the pool that, well, I, the name on there is Sherman. I'm not sure if the address is on McLean or Chester.
Okay.
It's by the corner of Chester and McLean.
That works. Thank you. Appreciate that. It just makes it easier for us to find it. What else you got?
Yeah, um, parking signs, no parking signs. Are they enforced or is it just a suggestion? The only reason I put, I, I have that is you have those new, the failing new within a couple of years. The no parking alternate side on McLean Street.
So currently, we're just finishing up getting our parking schedule done so that we can fully enforce everything in terms of signage and that is, you know, aligned on streets and everything that's in our new code that was just passed. So there, we don't have somebody dedicated and we're not out searching for parking violations actively right now. Once we get that done, hopefully over the next month to two months, we're gonna, first off, get a PEO that will hopefully go beyond just the downtown area to just make sure things are okay parking wise. But also our police will be a little bit more attuned to what's going on with that and be able to get tickets out in those situations a little bit more easily. So it's, it's a vexing issue. We're trying to get this done as quickly as we can with the schedule. And so you're not alone on the frustration on that one.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem, Mark. Thank you. What else we have?
Erin McCready.
Sure. And I should state Erin had given me the base for the ADU portion of the survey, so appreciate her help with that. Erin, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Erin McCready, thirty-five Hyde Boulevard. I submitted my resignation letter from the planning board in August. And I was told that the resignation was accepted and approved by the chairman. But then I was told that it had to be voted on by the board. I was just looking through the past meetings to see if I might have missed it. I just wanted to confirm that I'm not on the planning board anymore. And then on the ADU survey that I had put together, I was just gonna note that I was going away on vacation for a few days. So if you needed any changes to that, just give me, give me a couple of days heads up.
Will do. Absolutely. Thank you for that. How does it work?
You do need to accept the resignation.
And Erin, that's on me because I forgot to actually put it into this agenda. But would anybody like to make a motion accepting with regret the resignation of Erin McCready from the Boston Spa Planning Board? Trustee Fandanza?
I'll say it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion?
Is there a letter of resignation we can see?
Well, she just told us, so I think there is one, but right now I don't have it on me. So anyway, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Erin, you no longer have to worry. How's that? She may have left us. Yeah, she said, she said, I'm out of here. Yeah, absolutely. No, she's great. And I asked her to keep helping with other things in the village too, and hopefully she does. But she and her husband have kept us tuned also about how the stop signs are working on Hyde Boulevard and speed boards and all that stuff too. So thank you to her. Anybody else in the room? Seeing none. It is time for other business, including but not limited to board response to public comment. She's good. You good?
I have a couple of questions that you may, you may not have an answer to right now, but the courthouse, now that the police is out of the courthouse, is there plans for renovations? Do we have a list for budgeting for next year?
We're working on that. We have a proposal that came back from Labella on that that was a little bit heavy. And so we're just working to pare that down before I present it to the board, according to possible ideas. One thought is sale leaseback approach with somebody that ultimately wants it because there may be the possibility down the line that if the county does move, let's say, out of fifty West High Street, we might end up with that building type of situation. So that would be a perfect place probably ultimately for court if that ever were to happen. So we want to make sure we have surplus ability in this situation. But obviously that building needs some major renovations that I'm not sure we want to undertake them fully for our own budget sake. So we're kind of just trying to explore what the best approach would be on that. So it is unarticular. We're just trying to figure out the best way to get that managed right now with the Labella.
Thanks. I was under impression the county may not move out of the courtroom, but we don't know.
Well, fifty West side is in the courtroom, so we can make our own.
Oh, I'm sorry. So brand new play.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Another question is, I brought up last thing, it was just the park reserve fund. Is that something that we should be working on now? Or is that something we could ask our council or about now? I don't know what the timing would be, but I think we all agree we want, right? We both.
Well, I mean, yes and no. I think we're going to be pretty much capped out for between anything we're doing with the sewer. And you saw my message about the ARCA funds and making sure that maybe we have a few dollars left to put toward that sewer pipe in the Wiswell Park. We'll see when I can get that all squared away. But between that and the actual park itself, we're gonna eat up that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Also, don't forget we have to net out legal fees, et cetera, from that. So it's less than three sixty, we net out from that situation for Watale. So I'm not sure it's necessary. We're not going to spend on anything. We're going to spend a chunk of money on that park and using that money. So there's no, you know, doubt about that. So we're not looking to go waste the money on something else. It's not the intent. So I get your point, but rest assured, whether we have or not, that money's going to be spent on Wiswell Park. And then if we have anything left over, maybe that's when we pop it into reserve at that point. If we can, you know, do it for three hundred twenty or something like that instead of three, whatever it ends up being.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have the, I mean, you can have a park reserve fund without specifying the exact amount you're putting in in the beginning. I just think it's a nice goal to have one for both planning purposes, so you know what you have for park improvements and also for grant writing purposes. You can show a match or show that you're committed to park improvements. And so regardless of whether it's three sixty, three twenty or less. And also, we could go get grants and supplement the three sixty or whatever it is and add to the reserve. I just think it's a good tool.
Well, we get a grant, that money's going to be, have to go first out to the park because that would be the purpose for it. So then, yes, we would move to fifty thousand, that would be in the pool of money from, let's say, Watale. And that wouldn't be the fifty spent. It's the T-Mobile money, for instance, if the grant approved earlier. So we will be accounting for it no matter what, whether we put it into that reserve now or later, it's a different question. What are your thoughts, Madam?
I was going to say that the state law that we passed requires us to use the proceeds from the sale, the proceeds from the sale for park purposes only. So we're, we're bound by the statute to use it just for this.
Yeah, and I'm thinking both short-term and long-term as a village, having reserve funds as a budgeting mechanism and a planning mechanism beyond this immediate sale. I mean, I would support that anyway, to have that kind of park reserve improvement fund. So, all right, so there's not, I thought, I thought we were all planning to have a reserve fund, but I guess that's not the case. Do we have a timeline for the conservation easement or not yet?
So we're having some issues with the title company and the title and we're working through the descriptions for the actual purchase documents. Jim Craig was out country last week. He's just back today. I was communicating with him today. We're scheduling up a meeting to go over, we need to get our meets and bounds, and being said, we're working with Anastanco also at the county to do that. But we need to make sure all that's set to go. And the conservation easement is not a conservation easement, it's a restriction in the deed. It's not a separate document. But it's a restriction in the deed and it's drafted. I don't think I've sent it to anybody, actually. And once I'm comfortable with it for me, then I'll send it to you guys.
There's no closing date yet?
No, and the closing is going to be by paper, so there's not going to be an actual closing. It's just people are going to sign documents and, you know, put them in the mail. So there's not going to be an actual closing.
Thanks for that. One more thing, does anyone else know anything? I just wanted to mention something about the village harassment and discrimination policy. It's extremely important that the village provide an environment that is free of harassment and discrimination. Towards that end, we should be diligent in the proper implementation of the harassment discrimination policy. It's kind of my attention, we may not be following harassment discrimination policy exactly as required. I believe our current compliance officers are Anastanco, Bernadette Van Densen Perez and Terry O'Connor. The policy states, tell, correct me if I'm wrong, the policy states that annually, the mayor appoints two members of board trustees and one non-board member as compliance officers. And right now, we have one board member of trustees and two non-board members. And I believe this has been the case for the last two or more years. Since we're close to the organizational meeting, maybe this could just be corrected at that point, but I just wanted to bring that.
Well, I think that's the sexual harassment committee that you're talking about, that I've appointed people to and not a separate committee. So they've been made aware that I need to make those appointments. If I do, I'll make those appointments.
Yeah, yeah, but according to the policy, we need two board members. The committee is comprised of the compliance.
I should point out, though, that our first handbook meeting is going to be tomorrow. Just get staff's thoughts on the current status of things. So we're moving forward to get the handbook and the policies attached to the handbook fixed as we voted on a month, month and a half ago or so. So that may change too ultimately if we approve a new approach on policy on that. So just keep that in mind as well.
And you'll be sending a draft out to the board?
Well, I think you're way ahead of yourself there. First, I've got to get the lay of land as it stands. And then they'll begin to make policy recommendations and draft stuff and all that stuff.
Sorry. The other piece of the policy I just want to bring forward is section twelve states, this policy shall be distributed annually as part of our sexual harassment discrimination prevention training. I don't believe that policies have been distributed in the past couple of years. If my memory is faulty, I apologize. Appreciate seeing those emails, but just wanted to bring this to your attention as well, that we may be overdue in distributing that policy.
For the sexual harassment policy?
To all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion about just the audit in the meeting adjourned at eight oh one PM? Trustee Fandanza, trustee phrase push discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you later this month, just before Thanksgiving, actually. So we will get to wish you that at that time.